Hi folks, just hang with us for a minute if you're listening online, we're gonna get started.
Okay.
Hello?
Need to order? Guess we need an indication first, so.
Let's rise, I'll do that.
Well to God, thank you for this day, thank you for these people, thank you for our country, and we pray that you continue to make it strong. Or as we're looking into things that we've been searching, researching, and making plans for our county, that things would come together because of the hard work of our people that we fight before. And we pray your blessing on this meeting. Mr. Stark, would you lead us in pledge?
My dedication to his life and the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Indigent Hospital Claims Board, can I have a motion to go into that?
So moved.
Commissioner Totacini, do I have a second?
A second.
You're the first, so I need a second. Commissioner Sullivan, thank you, I missed that. So we have a motion, a second, all in favor of going into the Indigent Hospital Claims Board, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. I heard no one else, so we're going into Indigent Claims, and I was doing, I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Totacini?
Yeah, I'm here.
So that's an aye for going into hospital claims?
Yeah, yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
He's buffering, they're all buffering. Mr. Bexstedt, Commissioner Bexstedt? Okay, got that, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, so we are in hospital claims. Ms. Lear?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, you have before you a list of 38 claims the staff has reviewed, for a total $12,073.68, the staff requests approval as presented.
Are there any questions?
No.
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion?
I'd move to approve.
Oh, second?
Okay, I heard a second, did we have, I didn't hear the first because it's buffering, I saw that on the screen.
John Bexstedt moved to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve those claims, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, you're all four of us saying aye, so the motion carries. Second thing, we have a consideration of approval of minutes of April 7th.
The Chair, motion to-
The Chairman, members of the Commission, staff requests approval of minutes from the April 7th Indigent Hospital Claims Board meeting.
Commissioners, have you had a chance to read that? That was a motion to approve, Commissioner Sullivan?
Second, Commissioner Totacini-
Commissioner Totacini, got that, thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion, hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I heard four ayes, there we go. Then motion passes, anything else for you today?
Thank you, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. I would make a motion that we would return from the Hospital Claims Board back into the regular meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
There's a second, Commissioner Bexstedt. Our regular meeting, we need to approve the agenda, are there any changes, Mr. Stark?
Mr. Chairman, first time, it's a mission, there are no change.
Great, thank you very much, do we need to approve that? I make a motion to approve the agenda, and do I have a second?
Second, Totacini.
Thank you, Commissioner, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. They're buffering again. So, would you please, let me go this way, Commissioner Sullivan, did you say aye?
Aye.
Commissioner Bexstedt?
Aye, yes, affirmative.
They're buffering again.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Totacini?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, so we have the approval of our agenda. On the consent agenda, we have six items. The first one is consideration of approval of the regular business meeting minutes for April 7th, followed by the business meeting minutes for April 21st. Then consideration of approval of budget adjustment number 10, Resolution 19-20-58. Number four is consideration renewal of proposals 16-17-13, Life Insurance on Accidental Death and Dismemberment and Companion Life Insurance Company of Bolivia. Number five is consideration of contracts with Taos County for housing of juvenile detainees. Number six is consideration of FEMA assistance to firefighters grant applications. Are there any questions with regard to those, or any that you want to remove?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove number five.
Okay. So I would move for approval of 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 as printed. I need a second.
Second, Mike Sullivan, unless you got me on the-
You removed it, I made the motion and you made the second then. So number five, removed from consent, and I'm just moving it as between consent and business, so it's because it's removed from consent, that it's still consent. So Commissioner Sullivan, you have question?
Yeah, is Mike available?
Yes, he's right here.
Hey Mike, what's the difference in, are we doing away with what and picking this enough, or are we keeping them all, and what are we doing?
Say it again, Commissioner Sullivan?
I'm just wondering what we're doing here, because I thought we had a contract with the Juvenile Division in Albuquerque on this, is Tracy there?
Mr. Chairman, Pro Tem, Commissioner Sullivan, I don't know if Tracy's on the line or not, she's not according to Devon, but this contract is for pre-adjudicated juveniles. Our contract that I think you're referring to with CYFD that we discussed in our budget workshop is for adjudicated juveniles, and that contract is still in effect, and so that one is. But this one is strictly for the pre-adjudicated, we do not have a contract with Taos County. We do, as you know, have contracts with other counties, and so this is just, you know, Taos County reaching out to us to see if we would house their juveniles. It is at the rate of 225 per day, and I did notice that our contract actually that was included in your packet had erroneously listed 185 a day, so we'll get that corrected, but does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. So you guys, the staff's in favor of doing it, right?
Mr. Chairman, Pro Tem, and Commissioner Sullivan, yes. As we discussed earlier, we think this contract is beneficial, this fits in line with the services we provide today to local pre-adjudicated youth, and it brings in additional revenue to help subsidize the operations of the Juvenile Services Center. So staff is in agreement with approval of this contract as presented, with the exception of the rate in the contract having that modified to 225 a day. Any other questions, Commissioner Sullivan?
No, uh-uh, that's good.
Thank you very much, I would make a motion that number five, the approval of the contract for providing housing for Taos County juvenile detainees would be approved, and do I have a second?
Sure moved.
I have a second from Commissioner Fortner, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And none opposed, that's unanimous, we'll move next to new business, you want to take over?
All right, new business, item number one?
Yep.
Consideration for approval of amended resolution- Consideration for approval of amended resolution 7006, designating the location of 2020 primary election day polling places. I'm in front, Shelby.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Commission. On July 23rd of 2019, I brought before you our polling places for the 2020 and the 2021 statewide elections. At the time, you approved 33 election day voting convenience centers throughout San Juan County. Due to the contagion of the SARS virus and the very low, very real potential of poll workers and voters to contract the COVID-19 disease through the in-person voting process, we are encouraging voters to vote absentee for this election. Absentee applications are being sent to all registered voters of the three major political parties. For the voters that choose to vote in person, they will be required to maintain the restrictions that are put in place by the governor's order, which currently includes social distancing and no more than five individuals in a polling place at one time. Among the challenges of the restrictions, 60% of our poll workers are over the age of 60. Also, sites that we normally use as polling places have been closed. There will not be a reduction in early voting sites. All five will be open throughout the county. Under the circumstances, I propose that San Juan County reduce election day polling places to nine. So with that said, there will be one in Bloomfield, at the Bloomfield Cultural Center. There'll be one in Aztec, at the San Juan County Fire Operations Center. Mike Mestes and I will work through our current challenge that we have with that. Farmington, there will be three, I believe last time I spoke to you, I was proposing two, I've added the library, so that will be Farmington City Hall, of course Gateway Museum, and then, like I said, the library. Hertland, we will be voting at the KYN. In La Plata, we will be voting at the Community Center. In Shiprock, we will be voting at CCSD in the gym, and then Newcombe Fire Station. So that's under the circumstances that we're dealing with, that's what I'm proposing. Now once, if you amend the resolution and accept these, then we do, our next step is to go before the district judge to make sure that they're-
I noticed that you've got some specific precincts listed. Any one of the places we have to vote for precincts?
Chairman and members of the Commission, all of our polling places are voting convenience centers. So voters can go to any one of these sites on election day. And I would like to just inform you, today, this morning, we mailed out over 2,600 absentee ballots. Today was the first day that we could send them out, and before I came in, we had 71 individuals that have chose to vote early today, here. And I think a lot of them are taxpayers, they've come in to pay their taxes and realized that we're open, so the individuals I spoke with, that's what was-
When you send out these absentee ballots, typically, as a response typically, like right away, or did they sit on them for a week, how does that usually go?
Chairman and members of the Commission, it depends. This election, I think, has, there's a lot of publicity on it. Normally during a primary election, out of the 50,000, it's actually 59,000 voters that are eligible to vote, in the past two elections, we've only had 15,000 voters that have actually participated. I do foresee that there's some confusion when they get their ballot, and if they're registered, right? Because if they're registered Democrat, they get a Democrat ballot, they're registered Republican, they get a Republican, and so on. So when they get the ballot and they realize they don't have a choice necessarily, I'm not sure that we will see what the return rate will be on the ballots. That's another one of our challenges with the selection. Any other questions?
And if someone loses their absentee ballot, they can still show up and do what?
Chairman and members of the Commission, there is a process for an individual who either does not receive, that would probably be the majority of the cases, if they do not receive their ballot, they still are entitled to vote and can, will follow those procedures on election day, or through early voting.
And what are the-
So they changed in House Bill 407, and so as long as we have real-time connectivity, the voter would be issued a replacement ballot, they have to sign an affidavit that they did not receive it, and then the voter would be entitled to vote that ballot.
Mr. Chairman, would I be correct in saying if you showed up to vote and you had online applied for an absentee ballot, they won't let you vote, is that correct?
Chairman, Tim Crowley, that's actually incorrect. So if a voter, when they, online, they would request, they submit the application. So if they return, we receive that application, and if it's in the process where the ballot has been mailed, so all of the 2,600 that we had today, then that falls under the same category as Chairman Fortner's question, as far as that voter's been sent a ballot, they still have to indicate that they have not received that ballot in order to vote.
Do you feel like the number of polling places is a good location for the way the populace is distributed through the county?
Chairman, Pro Tem, Crowley, reducing these polling places was a huge challenge for myself and my office. We chose the sites that are our busiest normally, and we chose the sites that are open, and also the ones that as, the potential of going forward, if the governor were to say, were to lift all restrictions, the sites that we have chosen are ones that we can bring in more systems and more workers in order to comply, try to keep the lines down. We don't want a line, we really don't. We've, we had a little line this morning, we had eight voters at 7:00 a.m. The voters are participating in all of the social distancing, we're providing masks for those that don't have one, we're also providing sanitizer for the voters. We've got, right now, under those guidelines, the sites that we chose will all accommodate the current restrictions, but then also in the potential that these restrictions are lifted, I can bring in additional, the additional equipment and more workers. We have worker, we have, we have different levels of workers right now, mainly because through early voting, if someone were to get sick at a site, I have to decontaminate that site, I have to remove all those voters that, if one tests positive, the other ones go on quarantine, and I have to bring in a whole nother board. So hopefully by election day, we won't, we'll have, maybe we'll be a little out of the woods with this current situation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Totacini, speaking?
Yes, go ahead.
Who was the site in Shiprock again, I missed that.
It's buffering.
Start again, we didn't hear you, go ahead, Glowjean.
What was the site again in Shiprock, the voting site, I didn't-
Commissioner Totacini, we are using the CCSD Business Office, the AGM, that we always use on election day.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Tanya, I notice on the voting convenience centers, does this mean that you're moving the location here in Aztec from your office to the Fire Operations Center?
Chairman Fortner and members of the Commission, so we don't ever vote in my office on election day.
Honestly, okay.
It's only an early voting site, so.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
Yeah, in the eyes of John Wayne, I just say, go vote, vote often. Pilgrim?
Hey, Mike, start that again, you got cut off, go ahead.
I said pilgrim, go vote, vote often.
There you go. All right, Mr. Crowley, may I have a motion?
To approve, uh...
Resolution to amend, and a resolution, proven and amended Resolution 19-20-06.
All right, it's been, and then second by Commissioner Bexstedt, any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm gonna assume that it was unanimous unless someone speaks up otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. All right, next is item number two, Resolution 19-2060, Mr. Stark, proven submission of a build transportation grant application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. As you might recall, on February 20th, I know, Mr. Chairman, you do, because you were signatory for San Juan County on the MOU with the Navajo Nation Division of Economic Developments to collectively work towards the planning, design, and ultimate hopeful construction of a rail spur up into San Juan County from the I-40 corridor. So before you tonight is the approval of a build transportation grant application for planning and design of a railroad spur. As noted in your staff summary, we have contracted with attorney Jermaine Chappelle to help prepare this application, it's a pretty intense process, and she's coordinating her activities with the Navajo Nation, as well as the New Mexico Department of Transportation to garner their support for the project. This level of funding that's available through the U.S. Department of Transportation, that's a billion dollars, it's available nationwide. Each state roughly has maximum amount that can be awarded to each state is 100 million. Last year, under the bill grant, there was one project awarded in San Juan County, it was, not in San Juan County, in New Mexico, down in the Lee County area for the U.S. 285 project. And so our hope is that this application, which is for $2 million, as I mentioned, for funding, funding, planning, and design work, would actually gain some favorable reception. I know it has with the state DOT, and ultimately who we're having to make the pitch to is the federal government, so the U.S. Department of Transportation. So with that, I would request that the Commission approve Resolution 19-20-60, authorizing the submission of the grant application and authorizing myself to sign the application. And the reason being is the grant application is due on May 18th, it's not yet completed in full, so we wouldn't be able to bring it back to you in time for the, our next official meeting, which is May 19th.
Okay.
I can stand for any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Manager, the contract with Jermaine Chappelle, is that just, it's just, that's the amount we have to do an RFP for, for an existing contract, or what?
Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, it is, it was for a fee not to exceed $6,000, and it's billed based upon her hourly rate and time that she spent, so it could be less than $6,000, correct?
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
I want to apply our staff for moving forward with this project, we were working on that, and with all these things that have happened, with some funding things that didn't happen- funding things that didn't happen, it's just really good that we're gonna move on with submitting an application to get this grant money.
And therefore you would like to...
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 19-20-60.
Is there a second? All right, second by Sully. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. It appears it is unanimous unless I hear someone say otherwise. All right, that gets us to number three on our new business, which is ratification of the reentry initiative grant with the U.S. Department of Justice, Ms. Hodgman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commit, members of the commission. Good to see you all. You should have before you my staff summary report and project abstract on this application. I'm here today to request authorization for this U.S. Department of Justice grant. The grant will enable the adult detention center to expand the stepping up initiative by increasing behavioral health screenings and services to detainees while incarcerated. It will provide training for detention staff to increase safety and behavioral health awareness, and bring case management for detainees when they reenter the community. This will also offer an opportunity to review and evaluate the current process and bring improvement where indicated. This is a 48-month grant with a maximum award of $1 million. It's a long shot because only four awards are given, and there is no required match. So I stand, I have lots more details for you, but I stand for any questions.
So, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
So as I understand it, there's only four awards nationwide that are gonna be awarded?
That's correct.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Partial?
Yes, sir.
Are there any, um, they're not, they're not making partial awards of 250 or 500, it's just four of them at a million bucks, and that's it?
That's, yes, that's how it's listed.
That was a yes, okay. Any other questions for Ms. Hodgman?
Chair, I appreciate her hard work in putting this together. I've sent her about 80 gajillion things of, here's grant money I found, and she continues to investigate the grant money I find, and so I appreciate the fact that she's worked hard on this and is doing a good job at trying to find some places to help fund our mental health initiative. And this is just one part of that, but it has to do with where we are, what we can do, and if we don't apply, we won't get anything. If we do, we might.
Absolutely.
So I would like to move to approve the grant application and ratification.
Second.
And then it was seconded. Any other discussion? Uh, they'll just, see, the second was by Commissioner Sullivan. All right, is there any other discussion? There being none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. I hear nothing, and therefore I will assume that the vote was unanimous unless I hear otherwise. Okay, that gets us to item number four, consideration for award of proposal number 19-20-21, which is the Employee Benefit Program Administration, major medical to Talltree administrators. Melissa Wood, hello.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well.
Hello.
Yet we, we are back again. It was four years already, so we're back to get a approval to continue our third-party administration with Talltree after evaluations from the five proposals that we received. They were still the best cost with the best options available.
Right.
And I stand for any questions.
Mike, do you have anything?
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, no. This was a competitive procurement. Talltree ended up on top again, based on a number of criteria, of course, cost being one of those. And, you know, I could say that we've been quite happy with their service, the way they resolve problems in managing our benefit plan. That's a very important service, you know, if you're sick, and that's one of the reasons that employees come to work here, is we have a really strong benefits program, and to have a good TPA administering your medical plan, it's, it's, it's vital. So I, I would strongly recommend, as Ms. Wood has done so, the award to Talltree again.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to award this to Talltree.
All right, there's been a motion by Commissioner Sullivan to approve this award. Is there a second?
Second, Totacini.
All right, and there's been a, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? There being none, those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, I will assume unless I hear an objection that the vote was unanimous. All right. Item number five on our new business, considering amendment reinstatement of our county employee handbook, Mr. Echols.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'll try my best not to buffer during this brief presentation.
If you're not in the book, you're not...
That's right. As we do about every two to three years, a committee gets formed by the county manager to review our employee handbook, find things that have been a problem, laws that have changed, et cetera. So about six or seven months ago, we started this process, was the legal department, the CEO's office, the finance department, and the human resources department who put this together. I, what we would ask today is that the commission simply approve our notice of intent to adopt. We'll have a public hearing on June 9th. Hopefully, we'll actually be able to have people participate by June 9th in this, and at that point, we can go through any of the changes that we're recommending being made. I'd be happy to try to do that today if anybody requests.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, just to add to that, as Mr. Echols indicated, we had the small working group, but then we also sent that out to all employees for their comment. We did receive back comment from employees, as well as our department heads and elected officials. And so this document in front of you, and the summary of changes before you today reflects the recommendations and feedback we received. It was, I feel like a very, very good process in terms of us making sure we captured feedback from all employees.
I would also add, there were things we added only because of the current crisis. We never thought about having a work from home policy, for example, or some of the other things that are in here.
All right, is there any other questions, comments to either Mr. Echols or Mr. Stark?
I'd like to make a motion.
All right, there was, Mr. Crowley?
Make a motion to approve the publication of notice to amend and reinstate San Juan County ordinance number 34.
And a motion approved, is there a second?
Second, Totacini.
Is there a second out there?
Totacini's second.
All right, the second by Commissioner Totacini. Any other discussion? All right, then those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Say no. All right, then the motion passes, and I'm gonna assume unanimously unless someone speaks up. All right, that gets us to, um, report from county manager.
All right, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I want to bring forth, with your permission again, Mike Mestus, our emergency manager, to give you an update on the external response to the community. Before I let, turn it over to him, I would just like to, to note a couple items that we've done here internally as a result of last Thursday, with, with the governor putting forth the recommended CSPs, COVID-safe practices, that we've adopted those within our organization. In light of today, we reopened the administration building due to early voting, also for citizens to pay their property taxes. And so, as you can see, we've required the wearing of masks in public areas throughout the county. The majority of our employees were already doing that, based upon the, the nature of the, the facilities that they were involved with, or their role, you know, first responders, detention officers already were doing that many, many weeks ago, but we've since instituted that since we've officially reopened to the public here. We've also, you've seen a number of other protections we've put in place. I want to thank Daniel Hill and Steve Danzy with Parks and Facilities for retrofitting on a fairly short notice, a number of public areas in the admin building and elsewhere in the county with sneeze guards to be, to fully protect employees and our, and our guests, also known as our citizens, that are here on the campus. So, and we've got that put in place throughout, like I said, countywide. And with that, I'll, I'll turn over the time to Mr. Mestus and have him give you a brief update on activities to date.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Stark. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, commission online. Numbers today for COVID-19, numbers that were released at 3:30 today, 25 new positives with three deaths, two of those being in nursing homes in San Juan County. Hospital census today is 116, four tested positive, 28 positive tests in the facility or on ventilators, nine in the ICU. Information from today, Shiprock, their testing clinic, they did 430 tests yesterday, 480 today, with a total of 910. So those tests were tested at Shiprock High School parking lot, and they coincidentally are in conjunction with our 1,000 tests that we did at Reed Park last week. I believe we're still waiting on those results to come in. For the commission, I just want to let you know that we're continuing to work on PBE Community Needs, Sue's instrumental in helping with our mental health task force. We continue to work with the Navajo Nation as we did with our Saturday meeting, and incidentally, I have not heard from our affiliate person that was supposed to let us know about tomorrow's meeting. He has not contacted my office. I contacted him again today, and he did not respond. Continuing to help hospital with their needs. We're a few days away from opening up our homeless shelter at the Rim Rock. Instrumental help from Chief Burke on that. Again, our offices assisted with the get out and vote, and Stewart's helped with that as well. He's helping with the Vitelli, and that's the sanitation from the N9 side. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Yeah, Mike, as you stated, we had a telephone conference with President Nez of the Navajo Nation, also on was, of course, Mr. Stark, the mayor, the city manager, and our attorneys. And it was a good, it's a good continuation of our collaboration and communication within the city, and trying to address, and we asked them if there's anything we could do. They've responded, and so we're still doing everything we can. I mean, our numbers today were, what were they, 25?
Correct.
You know, where everyone is anxious, Stark, at least at first stage, and if not the second stage.
How many did they test today?
25.
So we had 100% infection?
Oh, no, no. We don't know how many they tested. They don't tell us that.
Well, in total, we have 5,297 tests. I don't have the number from the day before, but that, Mr. Chairman, that, that actually is still holding true with our infection rate that we've been tracking of 15.2%. And that's down from April 25th, I believe, of 17.5%. So that, the trend has been kind of a downward trend. We haven't really moved down much beyond the 15% marker, but hopefully we do. As we start having more tests conducted, we should start to see that rate of infection number decline.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Mestus?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I thank you for your...
Thank you, Mike. You're doing a good job. All right, reports from elected officials and department heads. All right, it looks like there's none. Comments input from the general public, limited to three minutes per person on subject, commission has not previously discussed, or formal action not been taken, nor formal action will be taken at this meeting, which leads to comments or input from the general public. Comments can be submitted in multiple ways, they can be hand-delivered, or they can be mailed, or they can be faxed. In this case, we do have one that was emailed or faxed. I'd ask Mr. Stark to read it and note that you only have three minutes.
I'm gonna read fast then, because we've got a large comment here. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this comment is from Leland Grass. He's the president of the Dunae Medicine Men Association, and here is his comment for the record. This comment regards to Chaco Canyon fracking. The sacred site of our long-ago holy people's dwelling should not be desecrated by outside corporation, individual, government, and entities. For these, the great holy site to Navajo people, we have traditional intellectual property outbring from this culture and its healing practices we have today. If it is desecrated by mankind, it will make great retaliation in numbers of sickness and destroy us all. Medicine people, we have make, make requests to National Park Services, U.S. Forest Service, and Bureau of Land Management to stop desecration on and, and or near our sacred sites. Our outcries by oral, writing, and even roundtable requests went out the other official ears by the authority who you hold ties to, and also Washington. A good prime example we voice will, happening now today, coronavirus is on about destroy humanity by huge numbers. We have voiced and the government ignore our approach to ask for consideration to stop all businesses, business developments, and recreation on our sacred site, but continue whatever they want, no matter what negatives sustained from it, to hurt others and wildlife. We are asking once more to stop. We have a great healing obligation with our holy people, with these places of holiness. Stories and proof of rights we have is from this area of Chaco Canyon. This where we recollect with other indigenous people with time and calendars. Without it, we will be lost. Supreme universal laws were made here with us and holy leaders who demonstrated after they have left. They exist spirit in the sacred landscape nearby and itself. It's alive and well. I ask to roundtable about the sacred sites consultation of Chaco Canyon, not disregard again. We breathe these areas with our Dunae people and medicine people.
All right. Was there any other moment, comment? It's like there's none, and we do not have a closed session, is that correct?
We do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then, Mr. Crowley, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. There's none. I'll assume that was unanimous to adjourn. We're adjourned.